Welcome to the July 9, 2024 City Council Special Called Meeting. Madam Clerk, I understand you have a letter to read into the record from the Vice Mayor?
Yes, Madam Mayor, like you mentioned, it's from Vice Mayor Chris Farrell. It reads, "The special meeting called for today is clearly related to an active court proceeding of which I am named a participant in and closely involved with. Therefore, with an abundance of caution and overwhelming desire to avoid any perception of or an actual conflict of interest, I am compelled to excuse myself from the two o'clock meeting today and recuse myself of the matters presented in said agenda. I do request this letter be included in the official record, and you read it before any business is discussed."
Okay, thank you very much. With that said, Council Missions, I know that you are named affiant on the same lawsuit. Would you like to recuse yourself as well from the discussions and any votes today?
No, because I'm not named other than in that capacity as a witness, and I can continue to execute my job here on City Council objectively.
Okay, so noted. Before we start discussing the agenda items, is there an objection from any council members to considering these matters as a whole rather than separately? Is there a consensus we can just discuss them as a whole? Are you all okay with that? Okay, great. So before we start discussing, I think it's important for our citizens, with all that's been said and discussed prior to today, that we have some clarification. So I've asked Mr. David Levy from the Electoral Board to join us today to answer some questions and maybe, again, make some clarifications for the purpose of our citizens. So Mr. Levy, if you would come forward? Thank you for being here. If you would just start out by introducing yourself and giving, yes, a little bit of background on your history, your law history, and currently what you do for the city.
Certainly. Thank you, Council, for letting me speak. I'm David Levy. I'm chairman of the Electoral Board now. I am the Democrat minority member of the Board. The other two members are local Republicans who are appointed from the Governor's Party pursuant to Virginia law, that the majority is from the Governor's Party. I'm a native Virginian, born in North Carolina, actually, but I claim Virginia. I went to Harvard undergraduate and UVA Law, and I've been a practicing attorney for over 50 years. I was the founding director of the Virginia Legal Aid Society and headquartered here in Lynchburg, and it's still here. I've been in active communications with our members of our Electoral Board, who are comfortable with me as the Democrat on the Board, being the spokesman today to explain our July 1, 2024 public position on the Alexander versus Farrell lawsuit and the June 18 primary. The Electoral Board is not represented by Council in the pending case. Dan Pence, the registrar, is now represented by Council, and he properly is refraining from making any further comment until he is deposed in the suit, which he has agreed to do tomorrow without any court order in order to expedite a result here. As stated in our news release on July 1, the registrar and the Electoral Board have an ongoing commitment to ensure that every legal vote counts. We remain confident that every lawful vote was counted in the June 18, 2024 primary election held by each party. The complaint in the lawsuit is at heart based on an erroneous and mistaken understanding of Verus, the information system maintained by the state, and not on the general registrar or Electoral Board's administration of the June 18 primary. The lawsuit shows a lack of GREEB, the General Registrar or Electoral Board Handbook, that is the governing body of information for voting in Virginia, the bible for us who conduct elections. The lawsuit instead is an attack on the information maintained in Verus as required by GREEB, the handbook. Verus is managed by the State Board of Education. It maintains records on registration and voting by Virginia citizens. This is where voter's registration information is kept and the record of whether a voter voted in a particular election. Verus is about who can and did vote. It does not contain the actual way people voted. That actual vote is recorded on ballots that are now in the clerk's office here in Lynchburg for two years, sealed unless there's a court order or release, with the ballot tallies recorded in the Virginia Board of Elections Enhanced Results Election Database, the results you see after an election. The lawsuit identifies in the complaint and the affidavit from Councilman Missions 125 absentee ballots in Verus from voters it names in the affidavit, named specifically, that it questions whether were counted. It says that those absentee voters did not progress from a status recorded in Verus from pre-process to marked to on-machine. There is no such progression. Those, all three categories, are of people who have voted and recorded as a voter. Pre-processed may be voters who have not been tabulated, but the lawsuit does not claim that those voters in this election were stuck in that pre-process category. And in fact, the general registrar here and the Electoral Board do not put voters in a pre-processed category. We conduct ongoing calculations, tabulations, processing of the absentee ballots throughout the early voting period, in scheduled central absentee precinct sessions staffed by certified and oath-taking election officers, who are from both parties and independents, and with observers from the parties and candidates, always being present. I have verified that the same way that we process votes, not by this progression, but by categorizing them as marked and on-machine, are used by other general registrars in Virginia. Most notably, I know that the Orange County General Registrar is one of the most reputed registrars in Virginia as being excellent, and they do the same thing. Particularly focused on the categories that we're talking about, the marked 125 ballots are ballots that were received by mail. They may also include ballots that were put in our Dropbox. The on-machine ballots are exactly that. These are people in the early voting period who come into our office and vote on the machine in the office. We tabulate those separately from the marked ballots. We want to know who, how many people actually mailed in ballots, how many people put in our ballots into our Dropbox. All of the marked ballots are and were vetted by staff and the general registrar for compliance with law. If not compliant, they are not listed as marked, they're listed as not counted, and the voters contacted them to correct the submission. If compliant, they're recorded on a log in the office on several copies and submitted to the Central Absentee Precinct to be tabulated. All of the 125 voters specifically named in the affidavit are recorded in Verus as having voted. If they went to vote on Election Day, they would have been told they had voted. If they insist that they hadn't, or if any prior, they had requested an absentee ballot but didn't return it, they would have to vote provisional, and those provisional ballots come to the Electoral Board the day, actually the Thursday in this case, after the election to be ruled on, and we check Verus to see what Verus says about whether they were voted. We also have a checkpoint that the voter can check on Verus, him or herself, and determine if their vote was received. We receive no such complaints. All these votes apparently were received according to the voters. Just as importantly, though, the 125 voters identified in the affidavit show up in the log we keep by name. He put the names in his affidavit, public knowledge, their published record, actually, which, and we tracked that the ballots were turned over to CAP, the Central Absentee Precinct, and counted. The tabulations of those counts support that the votes were counted. We use four different voting machines in this election to tabulate these ballots. We had one for the people who mailed in, we had one for the people who voted on the machine, we had one for the provisionals, and we had one for the post-election votes that we counted. Let me, I'm nearly finished.
Okay.
So I'll be, I'll be taking questions for sure. Totals were given to the Electoral Board. We get tabs of the totals, and we compare them to these lists to make sure we have everybody. It's a five-day process we go through to conduct the canvas of the vote. This is not an easy job. I get paid $273 a month to do it, just like you guys. We get paid next to nothing. Mr. Pence's deposition for the suit is scheduled for tomorrow. I expect he will say the same thing I am saying, but perhaps more accurately. The judge in the suit has let all of us involved in the suit, although I'm not a party to the suit, know that he is aiming to resolve it around August 15. We have ballots that have to be printed in September, so we have to have this resolved. He determined that the lawsuit was not at present a suit for a recount. The specific non-recount statutory provisions under which this suit is brought require that it be very focused, has one party against the other, the contestant and the conteste, with no trial, no actual trial of evidence from them, but with evidence taken by depositions. There is a three-judge panel that can broaden the suit, but the statute goes out of its way to say no amendments will be done unless pursuant to rule of court. You don't see that in other statutes about suits in the state. It goes out of its way to say this is very limited. Let me be clear. The Electoral Board and the city have a memorandum of understanding, now that we worked out, that governs our relationship. If we want the city attorney to represent us, we have to reach an agreement that the city attorney would represent us. We are not, as an Electoral Board, nor as the general registrar, requesting the city attorney to represent us. We are not requesting that the City Council take a position on the election results. My fellow board members and I have properly carried out the duties of our positions. The voters voted. We certified the results of that vote. We stand by that certification. That being said, I'll take questions.
I do have a question for you before we move on. So I know that you're, obviously you've laid out a lot of information, and I appreciate that. So if, let's just say, if the lawsuit were successful, what would happen?
That's a really good question. The judge would say, okay, there's not a valid, there's not a candidate, and it would be kicked to the local political party whose primary it was to determine who their candidate is. It doesn't say specifically how that candidate is determined. It will be by probably the rules of that party. This is a very unusual situation, because we've never, no one in recent memory has ever seen such a suit. This is a suit brought to challenge the qualifications of a candidate, not to challenge that the vote was wrong or right. That's usually done by the recount statute, but we don't have the recount margin that would allow a recount here.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Councilman Helgeson?
Thank you. And no questions for you. Thank you for that, spilling that out, but this is, this actually doesn't have anything to do with our meeting today. That is the litigation that is going to be before the court. So you may sit down. I don't have questions for him. Well, I don't have questions for him as I'm talking. So I have the floor, Madam Mayor. Please don't shut me down again.
Question, Mr. Friedman? Mr. Friedman?
Madam Mayor, you are correct. You're running the meeting. If Councilmember Helgeson doesn't have any questions for Mr. Levy, I think it's only fair to now allow other council members to ask questions of Mr. Levy.
No. Mr. Levy?
125 ballots that was cast was counted.
Yes.
How come it's being said that they weren't counted?
There, this theory that somehow ballots should have been progressing from this one status, pre-process, to marked, to on-machine, that isn't how it works. And so they were wondering where these 125 ballots are. Well, they've been counted. They are voters.
Thank you.
Council Missions, do you have a question for Mr. Levy?
I do, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
Did you have any conversations with the mayor prior to showing up and making this public statement to us today?
She called me to ask me to come.
She asked you to come?
Yes.
Okay. Was there any discussion about questions she may ask you and anything like that?
No.
Okay. Was there a vote from the Electoral Board to ask the city attorney to represent the Electoral Board or the registrar in this litigation?
Absolutely not.
Okay. That actually really clears up a lot. Thank you very much for doing that. And the memorandum of understanding that you discussed, I believe that was ratified in May, is that correct?
That's correct, by both the city and by us and the registrar, all three, three parties to the agreement.
Thank you. And that memorandum of understanding was amended one time?
One time because of our public schools and how they should be integrated into it.
And it had nothing to do with representation or the agreement for representation, correct? Does the, would it be accurate to say that the memorandum of understanding states that in order for the city attorney's office to represent the Electoral Board, that it must be in writing?
I would think it would be an accurate statement. It certainly would require a request and a negotiation. You know, I was the one who helped negotiate, who did a lot of the negotiation of this agreement. So I would say, yes, it should be in writing.
Got it. Thank you for that. And then just to be clear, there was no vote of the Electoral Board for the city attorney's office to represent them in this or anything related to this, is that correct?
To be clear, there has been no vote of the Electoral Board to request representation by the city.
Was there any vote of the Electoral Board or request from the Electoral Board, perhaps, what do you call it, when somebody else intervenes into a lawsuit? The, is it?
Intervene.
Like intervene and join, something along those lines? Was there, was there any consideration of that from the Electoral Board?
Yes, indeed.
Did the Electoral Board request the city attorney to enjoin or intervene on your behalf?
No.
Okay. I think that wraps up my questions. Thank you.
So for clarification, when I called you and asked you to be here today, I explained to you that Councilman Taylor actually is the person that wanted you to come, and because he wanted you to come clarify to the citizens and to council what you've just shared. So I appreciate you being here. And also, while we have you for what was just pointed out, do you, and you may not know at the top of your head, that maybe Mr. Friedman will be able to tell us, the state code that talks about the, the fact that the Electoral Board are employees of the city?
I don't have the sight of that. It is in the state code.
Correct.
But I don't have the sight of that. And we covered in the memorandum of understanding.
There is a state code that references that, and also currently, the registrar's office and the Electoral Board are not named in the lawsuit.
No.
So they're not in the lawsuit. Therefore, there wouldn't be, I mean, while I know that there's a deposition being given by two members of, a member of each entity, the, the conversation that was just had with you, they haven't asked for representation, and MOU that's being referenced, I understand that, but currently in the lawsuit that we're referencing, they're not named on either side of it, correct?
Correct, but Mr. Pence has retained private counsel, Philip Baker.
Right.
Who has filed an appearance in the lawsuit to be able to be heard by the judge. And in fact, the judge reached out with his initial notice of a hearing to include Mr. Pence in the lawsuit. He did not send such a reach out to the Electoral Board.
Sure. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Is there a question? Okay.
The memorandum of understanding, and thank you for the clarification on that. And I know the Electoral Board did not ask the city. Did the city ask to be enjoined or in any way with the case to the Electoral Board?
No, not at all.
Okay. And so was there any discussion about that, where the city said, we should represent as well? Because I've heard, I've heard folks off this dais say that since the city helps pay for elections, that we should help fund a suit or something to that matter. Was there any discussion with you or other members of the Electoral Board that said, maybe we should have an amendment to this memorandum of understanding where we do represent as well?
No, the Electoral Board members and I have had specific discussions when the lawsuit was filed about the fact that we are not requesting representation as an Electoral Board, and we discussed with Mr. Pence what he would do about representation.
So with that, when did you first hear about this litigation?
On the 29th of June. I saw Mr. Alexander's picture on Facebook in front of the courthouse on the 28th, and I figured something was up. But in terms of our hearing about the suit, I was able to obtain a copy of the complaint on the 29th.
How did you obtain that complaint, if I might ask?
I received it from a news media representative.
Okay.
Who, who I believe got it from Mr. Alexander's counsel, frankly. I mean, that's, that's how it came out.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a suit that is public knowledge.
Yeah.
I had gone on, on the weekend, that the 29th, I had gone on the court's online docket and seen that the suit was filed and seen what was scheduled for the suit, so I could report to my board and to Mr. Pence what was going on. It's public knowledge.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Friedman, yes?
Mayor, a lot has been said in the media by Councilmembers Helgeson and Missions regarding myself and the city, and really all of which was created by them, and I want to take a moment to address that, particularly the statements made by Councilmembers Missions and Helgeson. First, the city is not representing Vice Mayor Farrell in the pending Alexander v. Farrell lawsuit. Second, Councilmembers Helgeson and Missions are not attorneys, not qualified to speak on matters of law, and not in charge of the law business of the city. I am. Third, Councilmember Helgeson indicated the Alexander v. Farrell lawsuit is strictly a private matter between two persons. I respectfully disagree. This is because the result of the lawsuit could potentially affect thousands of city voters. The city paid for the election, and the lawsuit makes very serious allegations against against the city's registrar and Electoral Board, who are deemed employees of the city under Virginia law. And I believe that's 24.2-122. Thus, the city does have cognizable interests in the lawsuit. However, the city is not at the point of becoming involved at this time. Fourth, Councilmembers Helgeson and Missions could easily have called me to discuss their concerns or requested a closed meeting session to address their concerns with their peers and/or me. I'm available by phone. Instead, they chose to hold a press conference and call a special meeting in hopes of creating a public spectacle to attack me and other council members. This is unfortunate and it's shameful. With all that said, and with what has been presented by Mr. Levy, I do not think these matters that Councilmember Helgeson and Missions have presented are worthy of consideration of this dais. And I think city council, if it so chose, could indefinitely block consideration of these matters brought forth by Councilmembers Helgeson and Missions by motion.
Do I have a motion to block this indefinitely? Okay, Councilman Dolan? Big fan?
Mr. Levy, uh, city attorney speaks to why I would block. Absolutely.
Dr. Wilder?
You know, again, really no other additional comments. Again, our attorney has spoken. It's currently a case in the courts right now. I believe we need to let it continue to follow its course and we stay out of the matter. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmissions?
So, you know, I think that it's, it's pretty interesting that, that this is where we've arrived with this. Cause I think that there's some reasonable questions that need to be asked. And if I may ask again, what were the personal statements that you just said about myself and Councilman Helgeson?
Councilmember Missions, I said what I said. You've heard what I've said.
I mean, I think you were reading.
I'm not going to rehash it.
You're reading off script. And I'm just asking if you're able to.
Councilmissions?
Readdress what you said with that.
Councilmissions?
I've read my statement. I'm saying what I've said. You have the floor.
Madam Clerk, if we could make sure that the written statement is a part of the official record, that would be helpful. The questions that are posed here now, I think are going even, even further than the questions that I initially had. Is attorney-client privilege being used to shield potential improprieties and possible conflicts of interest? You know, there's a duty for the city attorney to provide impartial representation to the governing body and the constituents of the governing body and the constituents of the city. That's, it is, and when I say the constituents, I mean, I mean, the actual leadership of the city, the employees of the city. And the question that I now have raised, which is why I think it's so critical that we enter the official, into the official record, the written statement that I just observed in reading off of into the, into the official record is, is Mr. Friedman able to do that after displaying such hostility towards myself and another councilman? Just a question that I have. Every school board member, from what I've been told, has access to an independent third-party attorney. Why don't council members also have access to an independent third-party attorney? And then the next question I have is, when it comes to the attorney-client privilege issue, which is used, and most recently it was used to shield another email where there's a threat of litigation against the city that's made and a threat of litigation against individual council members that's shielded in another email labeled attorney-client privilege. Now, who invokes that privilege? Is it the attorney or is it the client? I believe that it's the client. Again, I'm not an attorney. Mr. Friedman was accurate about that. Does the city attorney have an ethical duty to disclose to all members of city council when these things arise? Is there a rule from the Supreme Court of Virginia on communication with his client? Because as I see it, we're all his client. All of us that sit up here are his client. The city is the client, the governing body. We are constituents of the client. Does he have a duty to, to share that information with us? I never received a phone call about this matter. I do believe that each and every one of us have a duty to accurately talk about our observations when we're witness to something. If you observe something that doesn't smell right, say it. You know, I think something else to consider here is, you know, with this quote-unquote privileged discussion. So let's throw a hypothetical out there. Let's say that somebody said the light was red, right? In a privileged discussion with their attorney when they ran that red light. And then the person goes out and says, I had a green light. The privilege shouldn't seal the deception. Right? Same thing. Should attorney-client privilege shield deception of the public? Would it be accurate to say that we need to follow our memorandums of understanding? You know, the memorandum of understanding is clear. The city doesn't represent the Electoral Board. Uh, I think something else that's interesting too to think about is, you know, let's, let's talk about personal opinions. Right? We just heard personal opinions from Mr. Friedman about myself and Councilmember Helgeson. And frankly, I don't think personal opinions have anything to do with legal matters. Nothing at all. And second, we start inserting and injecting personal opinions into things like this, that is when we inflame chaos and we sow division. That's what happens. So I don't have any issue keeping my personal opinions out of it. But the citizens expect openness and transparency in government and government owes it to them. I have a lot more questions now after seeing what I just saw play out. I think that it's prudent that we don't approve this motion and particularly because the number one point on this agenda is for us to pledge our commitment as a governing body to comply with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and prevent the bypass of the deliberative process and the selective solicitation of votes outside of meetings away from the public eye. We owe it to our citizens to conduct business openly in front of them, not phone calls behind the scenes, not behind-the-scenes meetings and not situations where we just have, you know, one-on-ones with council members to try to take a, I'm going to steal a phrase from Councilmember Helgeson, a straw poll to see where we're headed with something. If there's a matter that's important, we should put it out in front. The reality is there was a timeline with this filing. There's been a lot of information that's been put out there. Right? And hypothetically speaking, let's say the statement was made that there was going to be defense of an individual by the city. Right? And then that person had 10 days to respond to the suit. Well, that 10 days was yesterday. Right? So waiting until today, would it be too late to stop the city from intervening in the suit? Which is why Councilmember Helgeson and I called a special meeting last week. Now, some folks chose not to show up and some folks were out of town. That's fine. I get that. But the reality is in situations like that, my question, just like the question that was posed to us by the city attorney, is instead of selectively calling individual council members to try to get a feel for something that is, in my opinion, of the utmost importance that we transact that business publicly, openly and transparently, why then was not a special meeting called by the city, which they have the ability to do, the city manager can do it, to bring us in here Monday morning to discuss this in closed session? They could have done the same exact thing. They chose not to do it. Okay. Why wasn't that done? And then why didn't we come out in front of all of you and take a public vote on what our decision was with what we were going to do? That's all I have.
Mr. Friedman?
Madam Mayor, I just have a few comments to follow up on, on Councilmember Missions' concerns. What, what I would offer is this. The attorney-client privilege is held by the city council as a body. It's because the city is the client. Councilmember Missions individually is not the client. Either is Councilmember Helgeson. It's the body. And that is what makes the determination as to whether or not that can be waived or held. Councilmember Missions has nothing to be able to do unless a majority agrees to that. You know, additionally, I guess what I'll offer for purposes of the record, you know, sure, I prepared a, a speech today. Yeah, I'm a little bit nervous. You know, there's been some pretty serious accusations against me. And I have no intention of putting it part of the record because it's just notes unless council is a majority instructs me to do so. And why do I say that? Cause Councilmember Missions can't make me do that. I answer to a majority of, of city council. And that's really my stance on it. And what I would say is really in the world of law, one of the most sacred things is the attorney-client privilege. Clients and attorneys need to be able to talk. They need to be able to talk really about anything. And just because one or two members don't like that, just because they have a problem with it and want to throw it into the media, hold it up with all these redacted lines, they still can't do it. It's held by council. And that's what I would offer.
So I'm going to follow up. I'm going to follow up on that. Official.
I have the floor. Councilman Helgeson?
So with that, Mr. Friedman, that's, so you talked about the attorney-client privilege. So, and our city manager is a former attorney. So, but with that attorney-client privilege that you so talked about, you talked about the fact that when something is marked attorney-client privilege, it can't be released until a majority of council says so. Is that what you, am I?
That's correct.
So I'm glad again that you're here. Thank you for being here. You know, with that, when I had listened to what you recited in your speech, it almost looked verbatim to the attorney-client privilege email that council just got from you Sunday night.
I can assure you it's not verbatim.
It's almost, it's the, so I'm reading the bottom of it, which it said, this is forwarding or disclosing any of the contents without the majority of council. So with the attorney-client privilege, the body, the majority council that you described has to say, yes, you can do that. Now, of the two parties, where is there more of a dilemma? And I think most people would recognize that the city, the attorney has the ability or the, the real ethical dilemma and legal dilemma to not share that. Is that correct? More than the client, but recognizing both are there, right? So it, it just, to me, it seems like what you just recited, I'm reading the email. I'm not going to disclose that, but you apparently did because you listed several of the points in your open discussion. And I, maybe I missed something, but I don't believe that a majority of council voted on you openly defying this attorney-client privilege that you set up.
Councilmember Helgeson, I can assure you I did not defy that privilege. What I provided was answers to yours and Councilman Missions' accusations against me while I was on vacation.
Thank, thank you. So, so with this email that I just got two days ago, that is marked at the very top, 2:00 PM, 7:00, 9:24, attorney-client privilege, do not forward confidential. It can't be shared by anybody until a majority of council says so. But apparently most all of that you've just stated. I mean, this is, it's recorded. And so obviously we can see the, the recordings. But as I was hearing that, as your, your presentation, to me, it sounded very similar to this email that was sent to our marked attorney-client privilege. So, you know, with that, again, I don't think the citizens want to see privilege as a shield, as a deflection, something that we can say, oh, well, we're using it here, but not here. Or we can use this to beat people over the head with it. You know, this meeting i- is not about the lawsuit. That's happening in court. This meeting is talking about, as Councilmember Mission said, specifically on here, number one. I don't think we should be having votes based on a 30-second phone call on a Saturday afternoon while we're in the grocery store that says, hey, do you want me to go forward with this? And we're at the pool and saying, well, yeah, go ahead, whatever you think, without having the ability to have dialogue. We don't usually have meetings. I don't think we just have meetings like saying, let's have a meeting tomorrow morning. We're not going to let anybody know the agenda. We're not going to let anybody in the public know that there's a meeting. We're just going to meet one-on-one and then actually take action. That's not the way the governing bodies work. And I think this first item on here, I know s- some folks just want to have this go away. But can the item number one on here, I think it should be fairly clear. We're a deliberative body. We don't make decisions based on one-sided phone calls. Every time the city manager makes a presentation, there's always pro and con. You don't just say, hey, can we do this? And then count that as a vote to take action that could encumber city resources, to actually go to court, to actually try to jump in on a case that you're not named. Absolutely not an attorney. And you point out that in your email as well as, as your, your, your discussion here today. Never acted like I was. But when I look at thing after thing, just as a layman that is looking at following the rules and procedures, I've been on council for 20 years. I've never seen this much hostility, this much hostility towards council members. I haven't seen this much hostility towards stifling open speech. And, and so with that, we just wanted to get to the bottom of it. When we get a phone call on a Saturday, I gave my two cents and said, I don't think that's a good idea for the city to get involved in litigation. And then shortly after I get an email, go in the opposite direction. I appreciate Mr. Friedman saying, hey, I could have called. We, we talked and you said you were not answering emails. You were going on vacation. And, and with that, that's why we had to act because we don't think it's wise for the city taxpayers to be defending one council member in a private suit. With that being the case, it was the opposite. And now we're seeing again more items that are, are veiled threats that say under threat of censure, under threat of hostility. The hostility is coming towards the minority that is trying to have open and transparency. I think item number one is very easy for us to consider. I think some of these other items on here, you know, I think, to me, I think number I five is already that attorney-client privilege supposedly. I think we better vote on that one because I believe lots of those items were stated openly by the attorney that were in that second attorney-client privilege item. I think what the fact is that we got to make sure that, that public funds aren't being used in personal litigation. With that being the case, this is about the process. This isn't about that. I appreciate Mr. Levy being here. This isn't about the lawsuit. This isn't about the outcome of the lawsuit. This is a matter of what do we do once there's a potential litigation? Do we want to just jump in to say, hey, we're not being sued, but we want to jump into litigation too? Or do we try to do everything we can to stay away from it? Do we try to say, let's not entangle ourselves in someone else's litigation? You know, because I think lots of things that the city government does, we actually fund the, the circuit court. Part of our budget. We're not going to go over there and say, because we fund the circuit court, we're interested in the outcome of different court cases. we're interested in the outcome of different court cases. So therefore we're going to entangle ourself. We don't do those kinds of things. This was a very unique situation that it, a- and, and two, I guess I still do have a question, Mr. Friedman, if you'd be so kind to answer. How did you first hear about this litigation? I mean, we've heard a lot about where it came from, but how did you? How did you first hear about this litigation?
Well, first and foremost, Councilman Helgeson, I'm not going to answer any questions that would divulge confidential information. Further, you heard from Mr. Levy himself that these are public records. Anyone could find them.
Perfect. So you got these as a public?
No, that's not what I said. I said, I'm not divulging anything that would be confidential information.
So, so with that, is it maybe we could just do by class, you know, not having to have a specific confidential information? Was it people that are maybe, um, involved in the suit or maybe employees of the city of Lynchburg or, or something like that?
Councilmember Helgeson, I'm not going to answer these questions and play these games. I'm not. I'm not going to divulge confidential information in public or on the dais.
So Mr. Friedman's not on trial here?
Not, not asking him to be on trial, but I mean, he's the one who got that information. He's the one who called me Saturday afternoon and several other members of council. And then he's the one who sent the email to proceed. With that, with that being the case, I, it's kind of interesting to see how was it been heard from? I, I heard your comments today that you made that were eerily similar to your, your confidential email, but
Councilmember Helgeson, they were, they were not eerily similar. There may have been a few things I addressed on subject or reasons why, but there's a difference between communications to you all and what I may present. And even though there may be a little, a little bit of covering of what was there, it's not a breach of privilege. You may, you may put it that way. Let me say that, but it's not.
It, yeah, to me, to me, it seems since you actually stated it, it's now public record.
It is not public record, sir.
So anybody who just watched that on television erased that from your, your
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying the emails are not public record if they're protected by privilege.
What you just stated was the content. And you stated the, the content of the email, which you just said that you're not representing council member fraud. So this being the case, I think with, there are several things that we could do here. Or we could just say, hey, let's make this go away and not have openness and transparency. And vote to say, let's not talk about this, but I think the public got to see firsthand who is trying to see and wanting openness and transparency. And what side is trying to shut things down? We saw, we witnessed when we had a little press briefing after a council meeting. We heard the shouting and yelling both at the front of the dais and the back of the dais. I've been in here for 20 years. I've never witnessed anything like that. People are trying to have a, a conversation, trying to discuss items that impact our citizens. Spending taxpayer funds on something to try to interject into a, 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 a lawsuit isn't something we should do. I know our time is running brief, but thank you for being here today. I do hope that you will entertain at least some of these items and not to just vote to dismiss all of these items. Because some of those are pretty critical. And some of them probably doesn't look good to say, nah, we're going to never hear about pledging our commitment as a governing body to comply with state law. We're, we're going to allow for city staff to bypass the normal deliberative process. We're going to say it's okay to vote that in unrecorded votes away from the public eye. Now, if you want to do that and think that is a good thing to do, uh, vote to stifle any, uh, discussion of this. If you think that is pretty critical, I'd probably pull that until you can actually, uh, at least say, yes, this is a good thing to do and, and, and dissect it. So I won't be voting in favor of this resolution. Um, and, and I hope you don't as well, because again, item number one is pretty clear.
Councilman Dolan?
First off, to be clear, an opinion is not a vote. And second, I also read the, uh, the email from our city attorney and the, the things that he stated today were items to substantiate state code and to get you to understand why I took the position you took.
Right, not while I'm
My question, I thought votes were on the floor. I thought it would address the motion having a vote. So it's like you get kind of lost somewhere. Right? We need to get back to the motion.
Right. Yeah.
Read please.
Yeah. So the motion was to block consideration of the matters in the special meeting indefinitely. So I would like to call a vote. Um, and so what I would like to address is a couple of things. One is, um, to remind all the citizens that last week when the special meeting happened, uh, our city attorney was not here to be able to, uh, speak to a lot of the statements that were made. Um, and explain the city's roles, his roles, his office roles, and what they have the right to do. And a lot of the statements that are still being made right now are just, uh, inaccurate and, and mis- misrepresentations on what he does have the right to enter into on behalf of council as a whole and individually. I encourage the press to talk to him after this because I think he does have the right to be heard. And that is what I was trying to get across last week and really what a lot of people didn't come, um, for, because he was not here to be able to defend and speak for himself. As far as, um, last Wednesday also, I want to address that. I take this room and what it represents very seriously. The seal on the front of that lectern and behind me has a history I can't even speak to. The, the mayors before me, the decisions that have been made on behalf of the city are tremendous and deserve to be honored. And the citizens that every elected official that has sat on this dais that have been represented to include an honorable, uh, H. Carey over there and everyone else who sat here deserve to be honored for what has happened in this room. It has been explained to this council that press conferences in this space historically have been reserved for emergencies. I have an email since I've been on council that I have from last year where that was explained. I didn't know that because y'all know I haven't been here. I'm not from here. That it was explained, the history of press conferences in this room. And the reason why they've been reserved for emergencies is because of the significance of this space. So that when you, the citizens turn on your TV and you see the city manager or any mayor before me standing in here or our chief of police, you know, something significant. Oh, sorry, Mayor Hutcheson as well. Anyone else I've missed? I'm sorry. That you know, something's going on that is serious about our city. If this space becomes misused and we start using it for things that are not emergencies, emergencies. Cora, emergencies. That our citizens will become numb to when there is one. And that would be a, a shame. So what you saw me do and the frustration that I did exhibit was because I was trying to protect the integrity of this space for you. For all who've sat here before me and who will sit here after me because we owe it to this room and to the seal. That is what I was doing. And it was a misuse of taxpayer money to stand in this room to use it for a press conference to attack the name of our city attorney who was not here to defend himself. To attack our vice mayor who was not here to defend himself. To attack the election process or electoral board, our registrar who were not here to also give their side of the story by two people who had an agenda who did have the right to express their first amendment right. I was not attacking that. I was not attacking freedom of the press. I said, it can happen outside. I was defending this room and the process in which it's supposed to use, be used, and I will not apologize for that. With that said, let's vote. I call the vote.
Point of order.
Yes.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion and the mayor's not recognizing me.
The vote has been
I called the vote.
Councilmember
You've already spoken.
And I tried to offer a substitute motion previously.
But I'd already called the vote. You've already spoken. I've called the vote.
Appeal.
All right, sir. The point of order has been appealed. From a majority of council perspective, is there any desire to consider anything else other than the, uh, motion to block consideration of these matters indefinitely?
I think relative to some of those items on here, I think it'd be wise for us to at least allow a substitute motion that can at least show some things that may be there. Cause some of you are going to probably appreciate, would appreciate the fact that you didn't vote against following state law and having open meetings. So I, I think a substitute motion would probably be in order.
Councilmember Helgeson, with all due respect.
You're, you're, you're not recognized, but
There, with all due respect, a motion is on the table and a vote has been called.
So that's why I'm saying you, 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 it was asked, what do we think? And that's why. So I think it would be wise to have a substitute motion, at least entertain it unless you like to stifle, uh, speech yet again. So.
Do I have a majority who wants to, uh, appeal? No. Okay. Then the vote stands. Let's go on vote.
I would like to actually get a recorded answer.
Recorded vote on the appeal.
On the appeal.
Yeah, yeah.
We should have a recorded vote.
What, what are we doing?
There was no consensus there. We need to have a vote on it.
Recorded vote on the
I need to call the vote on the appeal.
So there's been an ask for, uh, whether to allow for a substitute motion. So that's what Alicia will ask is each council member, if you all want to substitute motion at this time.
Councilwoman Dolan?
No.
Councilwoman Helgeson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Councilmember Wilder?
No.
Mayor Reed?
No.
The motion fails?
Okay. Going back to the original motion on the floor, go ahead and vote please.
Councilmember Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Helgeson?
No.
Councilwoman Missions?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Mayor Reed?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay. With that said, we will now adjourn and we do have a three o'clock PDC meeting. Otherwise we'll meet back here at four o'clock for our work session. Thank you so much.